Welcome to the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is 6 o'clock, Thursday, July 12, 2018. We begin each of our regular meetings with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, the pledge will be led by Councilman Nasser.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, of liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Michelle.
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Here.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nasser.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you, Michelle. At this time, we offer 30 minutes for public comment on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you are here to talk about something on the agenda, you will have an opportunity to do that a little bit later. If you would like to speak to us on any issue, not on the agenda, please try and limit yourself about three to five minutes and give us your name and address for the record. So at this time, if you would like to address us, please come up and do so. Thank you.
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde. I live at 1411 Poplar Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. What I come to address you about again is what I've been addressing you about for the year I've been coming here. I had a friend who I trust and I like tell me that I've been vague lately. So I've had to think, and I've walked here thinking all the way, so that I could be more Basically, what I think, but also, I want you guys to understand that what I'm saying is what everybody thinks. Now, I've said this about democracy and how you guys are getting away from democracy, not just you, the whole country. And I'll tell you why I think that and why I mean that and see if you don't agree with me. First of all, in order to live, and this is everybody, you have to have four things, one of which you can get filed out, but three of them, three of them, every single human being on the planet has to have. Number one, you have to have air to breathe. Nobody can deny that. Number two, you have to have water to drink. Don't care where you live, don't care who you are, let's pour. No water, you're not going to last very long in this world. Three, you have to have food. Now, those three things are a must. I don't care who you are, where you live, which pour, I don't give a darn about any of that, including me. You must have those three things to live at all. And the fourth thing, you need to have to be a civilization. And that you can do without, but eventually, you will make it because you'll have to in order to live. And that is a home, a house, shelter. Now, I know that's all basic to you, but it's also basic to everybody on this planet. Our democracy was set up to help govern better than it's been governed in the entire history of the planet. And it was a growing democracy, and that's the part we always leave out. We always go back with the Republican Party and the conservatives saying, "Oh, you've got to live up to the Constitution. It's written down in laws, it was carved in stone, and that nothing else matters but that." No, no, that's not what matters. The four things I mentioned are what matters the most. Now, our democracy was meant so that we could all breathe clean air, drink clean water, have good food, and live in a house, a home. Could be anything you want in this world. A lot of people live in tents, and they call them homes. Well, it's fine with me because I've lived in tents before, and it can be done. But you've got to have some sort of shelter. And you may ask why? Well, it's obvious why you've got to breathe. Nobody lives more than an hour without breathing. That's obvious. Got to have water. Now, you can go on a strike from water, and you can get my eye a week or two, but you're going to die without water. Been on survival camps, trust me, you get a week, and you end up dying. Food is the other thing. Now, you can go longer without food, but eventually, the hunger strike ends, and if you really hang in there, I've read stories where the people on hunger strikes literally died because they starved themselves to death. So that's a fact. Every human creature must have those three. Now, that fourth thing, that's where you come in, the shelter. That's where our count comes in, our city now, comes in about the shelter. All the laws we write, good, bad, if you agree with them or you don't agree with them, are based on those four things. When we write the laws and we help take care of everybody, we see that everybody has clean air to breathe, clean water to drink, clean food to eat, has some sort of shelter that can keep them warm in the winter and cooler in the summertime, that's when we get along the best. But when you make laws that are unfair or do not allow certain people to be able to get those four things in a healthy way, that's when everybody starts getting mad at you. That's when your city starts to go downhill.
If you could begin to wrap it up, please.
I am.
Okay, thank you.
This is up for my introduction. Everything you guys discussed in the year I've been here has to do with those four things. If you think about it, not a single item on your agenda does not have to do with those four things. But there's a key word that I have not mentioned yet that you have to use, and that's what I judge all nine of you and the mayor about. And that word is healthy air, healthy water, healthy food, and a clean house or home. But that's what the community, that's what every voter bases it on as well. Now, my friend wanted me to clarify that. I clarified it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Clark Cowden. I live at 5 Todd Place in Terre Haute. For the last two years, I have been convening a series of community brainstorming sessions in West Terre Haute where we bring together town officials, community leaders, business owners, nonprofits, concerned citizens, and pastors. And each time, we ask people, "What do you think are the biggest needs for the West Terre Haute community?" And every single meeting we have had, one issue has come up at every single meeting. And that issue has been people want bus service from West Terre Haute to Terre Haute. This service started four days ago, connecting our two cities, and people in the West Terre Haute community are very grateful for that. I understand that this is a six-month experiment, and we have to see if there's enough ridership to make it feasible and sustainable for the long term. But I do want to encourage you all to be patient and, as you look at the finances and the budgets, not to make any cuts to this service until we've had ample time to see if people are making use of it. The distance from the transit center at Eighth and Cherry to the West Terre Haute IGA is a little less than three miles. The distance from the West Transit Center to Sony DADC is five miles. So even though West Terre Haute is across the river, it's actually a shorter distance than the previous route that was going to Sony DADC. So we may actually be able to save a few dollars on gas money by driving a little bit of a shorter distance. My only concern is that the final run of the day is before 5:00. And if people are working till 5:00, they may be able to get to work on the bus, but it may be difficult to get home. And if we are able to extend this an hour or so, that may make it more beneficial. If, at the end of six months, you feel like some changes are needed, I would encourage you to talk and reach out to West Terre Haute officials and community leaders before any changes are made to include them in the decision-making process. West Terre Haute and Terre Haute are part of the same ecosystem. Strength flows back and forth across the river, and as West Terre Haute gets stronger, it makes Terre Haute stronger. People in West Terre Haute, many work in Terre Haute, they spend money in Terre Haute, they go shopping in Terre Haute, and so making it easier for them to come here can actually strengthen our economy on this side of the river. So I just want to encourage you all to continue to think bigger and to think broader, and anything that we can do that makes transit and travel back and forth across the river easier, I think, is going to be better for the future of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Nasser.
Mayor, I know it's only been the first week, but do you have any preliminary numbers of how the ridership's been?
All I can tell you is it's better than our previous route from the DADC. I think it's improved.
All right, thank you.
I'll give you just a snippet once we kind of get that.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak? All right. Corrections to the Journal?
There are none.
Communication from the mayor?
There are none.
Reports from city officials?
There are none.
Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
I believe Councilman Elliott has a report.
Yeah, sorry. You distributed it before the meeting. It's a cash balances overview report. The front page is a summary. The pages behind it just provide details from our cash balance detail reports we get to document where those numbers come from. Going forward, I plan to update this. My staff will update it for me, and I'll present it, and probably won't provide the attachments going forward since you now know, you know, where those come from. But I thought it made sense to me to sort our cash balances into three groups: wastewater, Department of Redevelopment, and all other, and get a three-year comparison as of January 31, what those totals are. You'll see wastewater, $22,933, January 18; $20,586, January 17; $15,804, January 31, '16. The jump from '16 to '17 is the $6 million that was borrowed from the county that's in the wastewater funds. DOR, $10,135 versus $9,670 versus $7,900. They receive their distributions every year but haven't really been in a great position to spend those. They've been loaning those to the, a lot of that to the general fund. And the all-other funds is a negative $3.1 million versus $3.1 million a year ago versus really a negative $9.1 million when you count the TAW loan balance that existed at January 31, 2016. So there was a significant reduction in the deficit from January 16 to January 17. The MOLIT special distribution was received during that time period. That was $1,007. That was part of it. Also, the EMS non-reverting fund received payments in February of '16 and January of '17 of nearly $2 million from those Medicare or Medicaid adjustments from prior years. What I'm going to be watching for going forward is this all-other-funds number and see how that changes in January compared to the prior years because that's where the money has to come from, out of that group of funds, to repay the short-term debt. And I just want to track that going forward and see how that, see how that happened, how the, you know, the $3 million that was repaid this past June, how that happened, and then try to plan ahead for what next year's repayment ought to be. So it's something I just plan to, again, to update and just basically pass out or distribute, not even really talk about unless there's something significant that I feel needs to be pointed out.
Thank you, Ron. Councilman Nasser.
Councilman Elliott, was it just one year we got that disbursement with the EMS fund in 2016? I thought we got from last year.
It was February of '16 and January of '17.
Mayor, have we received any extra this year?
Not yet this year, but we expect a small amount. Very small.
Ayo. And do you think that'll be the final one?
No, we think there might be something next year to, to handle, but it wasn't very long.
Ayo.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Roy, I note that from '17 to '18, our negative balance in all-other-funds became slightly bigger. To what can you attribute that?
I...
From $3.108 to $3.130.
I don't know. There'd be a number of accounts that would be higher or lower. To me, that's basically a non-change, when I would hope for improvement in that total.
Oh, the '16 to '17 numbers are dramatically...
Dramatically better, yeah.
Yeah. Dramatically.
Yeah, and I was hoping for some improvement in the '17 to '18. And, you know, there's different timings of when money comes in and when money goes out. So, you know, one month is not necessarily, you know, an indicator. We just, that's why I think, you know, we just need to try to look at that. And another reason I put that together is we got some, you know, additional appropriation items on the agenda tonight, so I wanted to see what that looked like also for that reason.
Roy, thank you for this summary and this work.
You're welcome.
Any more comments from the council? All right. Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Taxed payments for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
Appropriation 5, 2018, $492,800 to motor vehicle, highway, street, number 0201-0018 to paving, number 432100 for $338,500 under principal on note, MVH, number 439178 for $131,800, and the interest on note, number 439179 for $12,500, and the purchase of equipment, MVH, number 444010 for $10,000.
Sessioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett, just do a quick review of this. This, purpose of this appropriation is to resolve our 1782 notice for this year of $288,850 for the MVH fund. We had to cut MVH by that amount, so we took it out of paving, and then we are asking to put 338.5 back into paving out of this appropriation so we stay within our 50-50 split. We're not, as I just don't want to be repetitive, but I want to remind you that we can't spend more than 50% of the funds, the revenues that come into MVH, on operations, salaries, benefits, equipment, all that. You've got to spend 50% on road improvements. And so putting a little bit more in paving makes that 50-50 thing closer than it was than we knew last year when we put the budget together. The second part of the appropriation is the principal note and interest on note that we need to put back into this budget. It was inadvertently left out in the transition last year when Leslie was gone on FMLA, and somehow that was left out. And then the last piece is because of the hot box we had to replace, as I discussed last week. It was a very expensive piece of equipment. We got a little insurance settlement coming, but we needed additional $10,000 to pay for that unit that's already been replaced. We purchased it. We just need to fund that line item so it's covered by the MVH fund. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding this appropriation.
Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak on appropriation 5, 2018? Counsel. Councilman Nasser.
Mayor, I know I ask every time we have this, but where are we at with the financials for the council?
We almost got February's today. We've got one issue that we have to resolve, and so should be first thing in the morning. We have to run the reports again.
What issue's that?
Matching up payroll, ADP. So it's got to be perfect. March is about 95% done, so I would suspect in the next couple of days, you'll have March, and then April's being started. So, and we're running a few days behind than what I said last week, but because ADP's not matching up, and March has three payrolls in it, so there's a little bit of extra work that we've got to do for March.
Ayo.
Councilman Elliott.
Yeah, the information that the mayor provided, a pretty detailed explanation last week, that, I went back to my 1782 files, yeah, that was the cut, so the 288, we did approve last fall that was in the budget. The other two items, you know, make sense to me. We've got to make our loan payments, and if you have a staff, they've got to have the equipment they need to, you know, to do their, do their work. So, you know, if there's subject to further discussion, I would move that we approve appropriation 5, 2018.
Second. It has been moved by Councilman Elliott, seconded by Councilwoman Aller, that we approve appropriation 5, 2018. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed?
No.
No.
Mr. President, I just want to clarify, was that Councilman Nasser?
Yes.
And Crossen. Thank you.
Appropriation 5 passes.
And Nation.
And Nation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, appropriation 5 passes. Next item, please.
Appropriation 6, 2018, $450,000 from local Redden Street, number 0202-0019 to paving, local Redden Street, number 432100 for $300,000, and a workman's comp, local Redden Street and 435010 for $150,000. You have a proposed amendment in front of you.
Questioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett, yes, you've got an as-amended appropriation that was handed out to you tonight. I want to make a couple of changes to this and reduce both of these line items. So we're asking for the overall appropriation to be reduced from $450,000 to $300,000. Under paving, it would be 200 instead of 300, and under workman's comp, it would be $100,000 versus $150,000. When we filed this, basically, this goes back almost six, eight weeks ago when we did this, we were looking at being able to do some additional paving work, which we still are, but at this point in time, in the middle of July, it's going to be difficult to be able to do all the projects we already have scheduled, plus these additional projects that we wanted to do. So I think we can live with $100,000 less and do the most critical ones before the plant closes, the first part of December. The second piece of this is workman's comp, recalculating the numbers for this year. Looks like we just really need $100,000. We've had one of the persons rolled off faster, and the other one's rolled off, and so the expenses that remained of the year are not going to be as great as we thought they were going to be a couple of months ago. So I'm asking to reduce these two line items. That also kind of addresses Councilman Elliott's concern about reserves, and so it'll be money that we'll just leave on the table in the cash balances in here, which, once again, MVH and LRS both have very healthy cash balances. So that's what we're asking to do, is take money out of that to fund these appropriations. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on appropriation 6, 2018?
Yes, I would. You're doing a lot of paving with tax dollars, and I'd like to hear from the public to state what roads are being paved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this, well, all I can say is for this appropriation, we've got a list of potentials that have about eight or 10 things on it, and we'll probably be able to do three or four. So right now, I can't answer the question of exactly which ones we're going to do. They'll probably be done in October, November timeframe, and we'll put that on our website as we do these other projects, just when we make the decision what we're going to do.
Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak on appropriation 6, 2018? Counsel. Councilman Nasser.
Mayor, I remember last week, Councilman Elliott had asked for that list of roads that were going to be on there, so we won't be able to have that this evening.
I provided that to him today. I didn't provide it to everybody else.
Okay, and I remember last week, Councilwoman Aller had asked for a rating system of our roads.
Yes, that was delivered, but it's also on our website, so anybody can get to that.
She sent an email to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
But just to her?
Yes, because she made the request. I always listen to see if that's a common request or an individual request, but it's on our website, and it has been. I didn't realize that they'd already put it on there, but she got a direct email from Chuck with that.
Ayo, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Mayor Bennett, I've lost track of where we are with Lafayette Avenue. Can you please talk about that a little bit?
You're talking about Lafayette north of Fort Harrison, the project, yeah. It'll be done next year all at once. We'd intended to do it in two phases, one phase this year, one phase next year. Our bids came in almost $900,000 over engineering estimate, which all bids are coming in high. And so we had two weeks, because when the bids came back, we had two, and Endot was handling that, we had two weeks before the end of the state's year to rebid it, which was impossible. It was no way to do that. And so that money will carry over from the state into next year, but it just means it will, instead of us doing our 80-20, our 20% split, 20% this year, 20% next year, we'll have the total amount to be paid out next year.
And then the...
It has to be rebid, which will be in April.
Thanks for that explanation. And then south of Fort Harrison, are you still planning to mill and pave that?
Yes, Locust to, or Fort Harrison, Lafayette, we are going to do two small projects first, and then we're going to do that one. We've got Second Street over here associated with Annex 41, and then there's another piece that is close to the campus on Seventh Street that we have an agreement with ISU to do. Those will be the next two, and then Lafayette will be after that.
Is that chunk of Seventh Street near Chestnut?
Yes, where Vectren did the work.
Yeah, turned it into a washroom.
Yes. And ISU's paying 50-50 split on that.
Good.
So we're going to get them before the students come back.
Okay. And can you, although I've read something about it in the newspaper, can you briefly update us on the South Seventh Street project?
Yes, it's moving along now. It's two months behind schedule because of the work that Vectren needed to do. It turned out to be much, much bigger than what everyone anticipated. So they're out of there, they're gone. Our contractor's been there all week. It'll go much quicker now.
And what's the projected finish date for that now?
It's probably going to be about three weeks. And then we'll start on the next section from Voorhees down to just north of Loc, or excuse me, Margaret, and it'll go much faster because we don't have any utility work that has to occur. It'll just be our contractor.
I hope you're not confused by my lack of support for the previous appropriation, and I won't be voting for this one either. I really need the financial information for the city. I realize that you're working on it, but we're in July now, and you just got January, and I'd really want to have that information as soon as possible.
And I do, too. And last week, I did hand out your financial information for these two funds, MVH and LRS for the entire year, all the actual expenditures, all the expected expenditures for the rest of the year. So everything was available to the council to make a decision on these two appropriations only.
Okay, thank you. Ayo.
Councilman Aller.
Just want to touch base again with talking about Lafayette. I guess in my district, I've been involved with Margaret Avenue project and part of the South Seventh project. My guess is it's going to sound like broken record, but I hope when we do do Lafayette up there in the business district, that the businesses get involved with the city and Endot, so we don't have some of the problems that we've been having with Margaret Avenue and South Seventh Street with the businesses. There's a lot of businesses crammed in a short area up there, and I just don't want to see any of the business be involved.
Ayo.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
As long as we're being broken records about Lafayette Avenue, Mayor, can you brief us on the status of sidewalks serving that, or is this just a road project?
There's a sidewalk from the west side, all the way from Hawthorne down There's a sidewalk from the west side all the way from Hawthorne down to Fort Harrison.
From Hawthorne down to Fort Harrison. All right, that's, has that always been the plan?
Since we got the final design done, it's always been the plan. I don't know what it was prior, 'cause you know, the design started before I took office.
Right.
It was not in there then, you know, we'd got the records and I don't, but who knows if maybe there was an iteration done along the way? Don't know. There's no record here of that.
So there'll be a sidewalk along its whole length on the west side?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. I yield.
Mayor, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, it's in the Board of Works budget for workman's, workers' compensation. Board of Works doesn't have any employees. I presume that's there primarily to cover general fund employees.
Yes, and we spent a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars so far this year out of that. I checked on it after we communicated today.
Okay, according to the most recent financial statement I have, it isn't near that, huh?
Right, so, once again, anybody that needs any particular financial information, I can pull it, I just have to pull it from three sources.
Okay, okay, so we spent one forty-nine of the two seventy-five?
Yep.
Through, halfway through the year?
Uh-huh, but this is looking like a pretty good year so far. We'll see what happens for the last six months. We've spent a tremendous amount of money on workman's comp over the last three or four years, significant amount.
And why is that?
Because people get hurt on the job and there's, and you know, we have safety classes, we do all the things we do. There's been a couple of examples where we've had people that have just, you know, whatever, for whatever it is, and they've been serious injuries, very serious. Firefighters get injured quite a bit, police officers do too, just in the line of work, wastewater guys going down underground, those things just happen. It's just the nature of the business. And we compare ourselves to others because our insurance company does that, say we're pretty much average for a municipality our size for those kinds of injuries.
Do we have, do we have insurance coverage for workers' comp?
Yes, but we have to pay out our portion.
What, what's our portion?
A lot. I can't, I mean, it varies. It depends on the injury, depends on the kind of services they have. I, you know, that's not my area of expertise, but I'd be happy to bring somebody in here that can walk through that. We've just had some really significant injuries the last few years.
So...
And it seems to have...
So what kind of premiums do we pay then?
I apologize, I didn't bring that information tonight.
I mean, that would be part of that line item also, wouldn't it?
Well, but it doesn't, that's the payouts. The workman's comp line item in that budget is what we pay out. That's how we track the payouts.
So the premiums are somewhere else?
Yes. Under insurance and most of that's through Board of Works.
Board of Works also, they've got a pretty healthy...
I can break that out, I've not done that.
Yeah, we might do that when we get to budget time.
Okay, we can go ahead and start working on that.
It'd be nice to, to kinda have that.
Be happy to.
Councilman Harrison.
Does he, you yield?
I yield, sorry, yeah.
Mayor, we're just talking a little bit about budget time. When do you expect we'll start having those conversations? Are we looking at September or are we looking at August?
Well, as, as we normally do, the, the budget will be on gateway on August first. So we're working through the final pieces of that now and the budget gets introduced to the council. I don't remember the dates. Michelle would know the dates and then I'll, I'll fill in after she tells you the dates.
Sure, I don't have them in front of me. We will be sending an email out next week. Leslie, Ellis and I had a discussion a couple of weeks ago and we're finalizing all of the dates to present to the council. Basically it's introduction in August, special meetings in September as we always have for discussion with the mayor about each department's budget and then to see if the council wants any additional meetings other than what we normally have, public hearing in September and then voting in October.
So it's pretty much the same schedule as last year. It's on, maybe, there might be a couple of days shifted just a little bit, but it's very, very close. When you get the budget that will be on gateway on August first, it will be all the expenses for all the budgets that need to be approved and all of our miscellaneous revenue, but we'll not have property tax revenue yet because we won't get that from the state until a little bit later in the process. So we'll have some estimates that we'll use to have discussions with, but we will not have that on August first. Nobody has it. So you'll be able to look at all the expenses and all miscellaneous revenues on, by August first.
Okay, thanks. I know you're having some computer installations and working through that. We thought we would get some information today. You're still working on that. Do you know when you'll have more information or will be, what will you have by this time next month?
Well, we should be through April and probably, I mean, it's possible we'll have May then. So I mean, then we'd only be, you know, we'd be where we're supposed to be.
Okay.
Be within thirty days. But for the budget discussions, I guess if you're still on the budget discussion, we won't even have those conversations till the third week of September.
Okay.
So we'll have, we'll have all that by then. I mean, that's, that's pretty far out there from my day-to-day perspective of trying to get this information.
Sure. Seems to be some, some issues with the council, might help too. We like to have our numbers when we can get them.
Yep.
So if appropriation six does not pass, what does that do for the city?
Well, it just...
Does that hold anything up?
If, what it means is that we won't have the additional paving money and you know, we, we already had a ninety thousand dollar change order on south Seventh Street, so I kinda had to eat that. The workman's comp, we need to fund that line item. That, that needs to kinda happen, but it's not the end of the world.
So if it doesn't happen tonight, or if it's tabled or whatever, can it happen in a month?
Yeah, it can happen in a month, but nothing will change on the financials that I gave you last week. I mean, the only thing we would be able to do would be put July's probably, you know, final figures in there that I don't have right, you know, in what I handed you last week. That'd be the only thing that would change.
Okay, and Earl, I'm gonna, you've got a comment too, maybe? I guess what I'm curious about is with the finances, what we have as January, what are we holding you up on for the rest of the year?
Well, here's the dilemma I have. I'm already trying to get my thoughts organized and, and a plan for what I want to be a three million dollar reduction in short-term borrowings next year. And, and it's hard to spend more money and then have money left over to make that kind of a reduction. So I'm challenged by approving three hundred thousand dollars. I was hoping we could do a reduction in the Board of Works workers' comp, but that doesn't sound like that's prudent with this new number. And, you know, it, I don't know, I don't take this as strong as it sounds, but it, but it's almost like, you know, eligible for malpractice to make this type of a decision without current, current financial information. So the, the only way, if I was to be convinced to vote for this, it's gonna be with an understanding that three million dollars is the number for next year's reduction and I'll work on, you know, the different ways I think, where I think that could come, how we could get there and which of the two pieces and see if any of those make sense to us and, you know, we stick to that. 'Cause that, my terms right down to it, that's the, that's the objective, is to have the cash available to reduce, generate the cash, positive cash flow this year to make the reduction in the short-term debt next year that I sense we all want to, all want to make. So...
Councilman Harrison, you saw, oh, you, oh, you, go ahead.
No, so, would you have a problem if we tabled it with a guarantee of the finances?
Go ahead, no.
Well, that's, you know what I'm gonna ask?
Yes, I do. Go ahead.
Well, I've asked.
Just for the record.
Well, I mean, with the finances, would you be all right with us tabling it?
Okay, here's what I would say, our finances are improving daily, okay? We are in a much better position than we were a few short years ago and our estimates for revenues are conservative. They were building into this year. We've already exceeded that. We think we're gonna collect a few more property taxes than what we planned on last year. We're gonna meet that goal and that's my, that's my goal. That's what I put out there, is to reduce the borrowing. And so I have factored this into that and we're still gonna accomplish that. I can draft up and show you a piece of paper and show you that, but once again, it's just a plan. It's a, it's a goal. It doesn't mean anything until you spend the money and collect the money. So I think we can easily get there. I, I just, right now, even if I gave you the other financials, those things really don't have anything to do with these two appropriations, they just don't. I understand the cash balance, that does, but nothing else. And here's the other point I still wanna make to you guys again, ladies and gentlemen, Endot and the legislature and others are gonna watch very closely what we do with the funds that come into MBH and LRS. I've already been told in multiple AIM settings that at the end of the year, they're gonna collect the information from every community and they're gonna look and see how much they spent of this new revenue that came in. They wanna make sure that money are going to fix roads and you're not spending it on, that's why they did the fifty-fifty thing, they wanna make sure you weren't spending more on hiring more staff and they wanna make sure you don't have an excessive cash balance. They want the roads to be fixed, they want the money to go to the roads. And so we're not gonna get penalized, that's, that's probably two or three years away, but it's coming. And it also may affect our grant opportunities. If we have large cash balances in MBH and LRS, they may deny us for a grant to community crossings or local tracks that we're applying for, for another overpass. They factor in those financial, your financial situation, be able to make your twenty percent match and all those things, but they look to see what your balances are. And so that's just part of the application process. And all I wanna do is make sure that, let's, let's start shifting our reserves to other funds besides these two and shoot for our fifteen percent cash balance in these two funds, which is what the state recommends, 'cause right now we're in the thirties, thirty-six on one of them.
So the finances that were presented last week representing this wouldn't change?
It would change now a little bit, we'd have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the bottom line, right.
But otherwise, there wouldn't be a new set presented to us?
No, you would not get any, only thing that would be new would be when we get the final, I mean, I could update the actual expenditures, we've estimated expenditures.
I yield.
Councilwoman Crosson.
Thank you. Earl, I don't think your, your term of malpractice is too far off the mark and, and I don't think it's necessarily too strong a word. Since I've been on council, we've had very short periods of time, no more than three or four months in a row where we've gotten timely monthly reports. This has been the longest, I think, that we've gone without. We have regularly asked about it, members of the public have regularly asked about it at meetings. There's always a new excuse. Some of the excuses may have been valid, but they're constant and they change all the time. So I don't think your use of that term is off the mark. It's why I voted against the last appropriation, it's why I will vote against this appropriation. And part of that is, I used to serve on a board and I was president of that board for a while, non-profit board here in the community and we had for a period of time an executive director who regularly came to meetings despite our asking for them without financial reports and finally had to say to this person that if we didn't get those reports, that person wouldn't be attending the next meeting. We don't have that kind of a power situation here, rightly so. But asking for them, putting the mayor on the spot about them doesn't seem to do any good. So I don't know what else to do but to vote against these things until we start getting those reports so that we can assure the public that we are making these decisions with a full set of facts in front of us. I yield.
Mr. President, can I respond to that?
Yes, Mayor.
You know, that's unfortunate that it's, you know, this is all about the attacks of our staff. They are working very, very hard in what they're doing. I'm not gonna put out any financial reports that are not accurate, not gonna do it. And it's my responsibility to run the finances of the city, not the city councils. It's not, by statute, it's my job and we're doing that. I can tell you exactly what we have in every fund, if somebody wants to know that. And I would challenge any of you, come on in, take a look, come in tomorrow. We're gonna be working through, finished in the February part and working on March and I will show you how complicated this is to move the data from ADP into our old system and then we're also having to do it into our new system. Once again, you can make all the faces you want, you can be mad at me, you can say I'm not doing anything, but it's ridiculous for that kind of an accusation to be made that we are not trying to get the financial reports out. Absolutely untrue. I am disappointed. I want the same stuff. Every day I have a meeting with staff saying, where are we at? Where are we at? They're making tremendous progress, but I can't roll them out yet. And I think it's unfortunate that we're not working together as a team to be supportive of this, to get through it. And once we get through it, we'll be fine. That's the bottom line. And I just, every meeting we come, the same issue's raised again and I, I hear ya. I don't wanna have to stand here and have that question brought to me again and again and again, when it's the same answer, that we've gotta get it finished. I'm working on it and we're gonna get it done. It's gonna be accurate though. I'm not gonna put reports out that are not accurate and then have the council come back and say, oh, look, this is different. That's exactly what would happen. Mr. President, thank you for that opportunity.
Sure, Mayor. Councilman Elliott.
Mayor, is, is just the cash balance report available more currently?
Not until we get the right ADP or the payroll and benefits plugged in right, or it would be...
That impacts the cash balance?
Absolutely, from the different funds, absolutely.
Well, you have to reconcile...
That was one of the first questions I asked.
You have to reconcile your bank accounts...
Absolutely.
...to know what's there. You just don't know the individual pieces.
They're, they're incorrect. The file we got from ADP has, as an example, Chief Jeff Fisher's salary was split between engineering, non-averting and fire, as one example that was found recently. And it's been corrected now, we have no idea why that changed.
Okay.
And so I can't put those reports out. It was not accurate.
I understand, I get that. Now, when I look at that, the Edit budget has a hundred thousand dollars of paving in it, is that earmarked for something?
It's just part of our paving pool. So it's just, we've been reducing the dependence off Edit to focus on LRS and MBH.
But I mean, you know, there's three and a half million dollars in, in expenditures in the, in the, in the Edit budget. Can, can you come up with two or three hundred thousand dollars of cuts in there that we could approve in August and then make the additional in, in local Redden Street?
We could, but once again, if you remember, the Edit budget is a plan. It's, it's different than all the other budgets.
Mayor, if it's in the budget, it can be spent.
It sure can.
It can be transferred.
Uh-huh.
So by asking us to approve an additional appropriation, we're increasing the potential amount that could be spent. If we make an additional appropriation or make an offsetting cut somewhere else at the same time, we aren't making, increasing the total amount that can be spent. That's, that's, that's my point.
Okay.
So, seems like we, you know, that's a, that's a way to address that. Now, council does have a say in how much temporary borrowing we approve. That, that's definitely us. So when the time comes, that's why I'm, you know, wanna get the discussion started now, ahead of the budget process for next year, ahead of anything else that, that we do and I'll, I'll have something next month on that. I yield.
Councilman Nasser.
Sorry.
The other one. Councilman Nasser, go ahead.
Go, go ahead.
Rather than listen to this every meeting, I, listening to Mr. Elliott, if we tabled this tonight, could you come back at the next meeting in, what is this month, July? August, with a cut somewhere to offset this appropriation? Is there a way? 'Cause this is gonna be a less of appro, it's gotta be amended anyway, correct?
It's gotta be amended, yes.
It's gotta go down. With a cut somewhere to offset this appropriation? Is there a way... Because this is going to be a less of appro... It's got to be amended anyway, correct?
It's got to be amended, yes.
It's got to go down. You've already said you're going to reduce it. Is there a way to do that so that we can get this paving and workman's comp, whatever else you need in this appropriation, without actually spending additional funds? I see right now that if this happens, a vote tonight, it's not going to pay.
Yeah. Okay. And that's fine. It's not going to be the end of the world, as I said. This is what we needed to do to just get this set and then we know what we've got to work with. If we don't do it, okay, fine. The point is that you have the financial information to make that decision. This is just... Now, we're talking kind of about, we're looking down the road versus looking at this tonight. That's fine. If you want to cut somewhere else, that's fine. But we're going to come in under budget, especially like in Edit. We're not going to spend all that money in Edit. We never do. It's a plan. Yes, it's a budget, but I control what those expenditures are. The employees can't just go spend to the line and go home. It doesn't work that way. It never has. And so, we can do it a couple of different ways and still accomplish the same goal. And we could wait on this and just say, "You know what? We're not going to do it and we're not going to pave any of those additional streets." And that's fine. That's okay. I mean, we're going to run out of time at some point to be able to get them on the schedule. And that's fine.
And my only point is that to give some of the council people justification for voting for this might be what Mr. Elliott just suggested. And if that's the case, it's a win-win because we can cut somewhere, we can get this done, you can do your street paving and sidewalks, and then when you get calls at City Hall saying, "How come you're not doing this?"
Point at the council.
And I'm just... I mean, I'm trying to be the devil's advocate there.
I got you.
And try to, you know... So, some way we get things done quickly, but still satisfy some of the concerns of council people.
And keep in mind, Councilman Azar, that we'll be bringing budget reductions to you. I would expect in the tune of $1 million in December. So, that would just be... We'll subtract. If we reduce it now, you know, I mean, it'll all just shake out in the end. It'll be a reduction. There will be an official reduction. Maybe we'll do two reductions this year. We usually do it in one meeting.
Okay. Let me ask a question here. If we... If the council would approve tabling this till next meeting, till either you can get more information that some of the council has asked for, or you can do what Mr. Elliott has asked for, or both, do we have to amend this now and then table it? Or can we table it as it is and then amend it at the next meeting?
In my opinion, it doesn't make a difference.
It doesn't make a difference either way.
The proposed amendment's a reduction.
Right.
So, it's less restrictive.
So, we could technically just table this particular appropriation tonight?
Correct.
And then, if we vote on it at the next meeting, we can amend it on the floor at the next meeting?
Correct.
And hopefully, by then, either the mayor can come up with more of a report or he can come up with what Mr. Elliott has asked for.
So, I wouldn't make it August. I'd make it September then to make sure that I have more, you know, a couple of weeks here to finish the rest of the reports.
And I think if that will get the information...
If that will do it, then I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Is there any... Go ahead.
One question, though. This... By delaying this, what effect do you want to have on the work?
We've got to pay the bills, so we've just got to fix it by December.
Okay.
Okay. So, you're okay till September if we have to?
You know, these things happen. You know, we have to bring appropriations and do things like that. Things happen that go exceed the budget and then we fix it. We usually do it at the end of the year, though, because you don't want to do it in July and then have to turn around and do it again. We do it once.
Okay. What I'm trying to get at is, I don't want to see a missed opportunity if we can... Of paving and doing sidewalks and streets and you have to pay workman's comp. And if this, tabling it till September, will give the information that some have asked for, I think that's the way to go with this, rather than vote no and just defeat it. I think that hopefully...
A voting no would be...
Yeah. Would satisfy everyone.
Councilman Nassar.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. You had mentioned the community crossings grant. I went to a workshop on that when it was first introduced. Could you send me the language that talks about balances as being part of the scoring system?
That's what's coming. That's what's coming. We've already been... No. Not on the current... Now, I haven't seen the new application. You know, that one's out, but it's coming. That's what we're told. It's probably going to be next year.
Because I don't remember them talking about that.
It's because we're just starting to track it at the end of this year. They want to look at what you did in '18 and then as we move forward, somehow it's going to weave its way in there. I don't know what it's going to look like.
All right. And then, one thing that I appreciate, you know, tonight is you're very passionate about your staff. And I hope you understand that at least this council person doesn't think that it's the staff's fault why we're getting these reports. I think where I get questioned on the street from my constituents is when you have told us a date that you were going to have the reports and then we come to that date and, "Oh, we're almost done. It'll be later on." And you might be just saying that, and I don't think you're saying it to appease the council, but I think that puts you in a predicament where you're setting yourself up for failure. So, when do you think you can get us all the way until the end of May? When is your date that you think, no questions asked, we can have it done?
So, I was just getting ready to say, "So, don't ask me for a specific date because then if we don't meet it, then you're going to say, 'There he goes again. Doesn't do it.'" I know that February is... We got one entry to fix. We found one final thing that balances it to the penny. Once we do that in the morning, then we can run the reports, review them, send them out to you. Then February's done. I mean, I feel good about February. March, all the financials have been converted. Now, we're reviewing. So, that's going to be really close. But if I tell you Tuesday, it may be Friday. And maybe it's Monday. Depends on how many more hours we work. I mean, we're staying late at night and working weekends to do this. And so, all I know is that until we get ADP... And then, we have to turn around and do this again, all over again. That's what you guys hopefully understand, where that's going into the old system just to get you reports. Then we have to make that conversion to Financial Edge. It's going to be a little easier, but we have to do that same conversion again. And then, we will use Financial Edge as our official records from January 1st to December 31st of '18, not the old system.
Well, maybe I was misunderstood. I thought the ADP part was already completed with all... From where we were at. I thought that...
Not the conversion into each month and then balancing it to the penny.
Okay.
And that's because some issues on ADP's end is what we've found recently.
So, do you feel comfortable if we were to table this till...
I think September.
September.
Because that way, I can get the other reports done.
Okay. So, in September, when we vote on this, when... Up to what month will we have the financials for?
See, the September meeting, you would have the July.
Okay.
We just... Because we wouldn't be working on August till late September.
Okay. Why would you do it?
That is okay, but not catching up. That's the hard part.
Councilman Azar.
If there are no further questions, I would like to move to table Appropriation 6, 2018, until the second meeting in September of the council.
It has been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilman Garrison, that we table Appropriation 6, 2018, until the second regular meeting in September.
What is that date?
For clarification, that's September 13.
This will be on September 13. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It has been tabled. Next item, please.
Special Ordinance 9, 2018, rezoning a property located at 1140 Locust. Area Planning gave a favorable recommendation and you have a copy before you.
Mr. President.
Good evening, Mr. President. I'm one of the members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm with Right-Side Land Lowry. And tonight, I'm here representing SAS Properties LLC. As you may recall from last week, we discussed their potential use of this building as storage units if they get the favorable recommendation from this council. They're asking us property to rezone from a C3 commercial to a C5, which would allow for the storage units. As Michelle stated, Area Planning met last night. They gave it a favorable recommendation. And I'm here tonight asking you to approve this and for it to be rezoned C5. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anybody in the audience who has a question or would like to speak on Special Ordinance 9, 2018? Council.
Mr. President. Councilman Nation.
Richard, I had a little bit of confusion over the C5 Commercial Entertainment District. On the Area Planning report, on the first page of the packet that we all have, says C5 Commercial Entertainment District, right there in the first paragraph. But then, on the application information, it says C5 General Business District. I think I've had my concern answered, but I wonder if the legal minds here and the government minds can tell me why this phrase, C5 Commercial Entertainment District, is showing up anywhere in our paperwork?
Probably the simplest answer would be that was an error.
Scripter.
Yeah.
It should be Commercial Business District.
Yeah, it is Commercial Business, yeah. And it's in that within the rest of the documents. It was just in the application for some reason.
Well, I'm looking at a document from Area Planning, which presumably should know what this stuff says, that says Commercial Entertainment District.
Can you show me what?
It's the very first page. It's a letter from Jared Baylor. In the first paragraph, right there.
I can't answer the question as to why they... They could have used language that was on the application. I can't. But it was pretty clear... It was pretty clear last night during the discussions.
Okay. And I don't want to make a big deal out of this. I just want to point out that the Commercial Entertainment District is a designation that we... That no longer exists, if I understand it correctly. And under the previous Commercial Entertainment District, this is where we had all the adult use stuff. And I really just want to make sure that this is a mini warehouse rezoning and not a stalking horse for a strip club.
No, it's a mini warehouse, as the site planned it to place.
No worries. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. And I don't think C5 would be a proper for the strip club. If not, there'd be a lot of areas that would be available for that use in our community. And that's not the proper classification.
Thank you, I yield.
Should we correct this?
It's an Area Planning document. His paperwork has the right stuff now, as far as I can tell.
Special Ordinance.
And just to be clear, there's not more than one C5 classification?
Yeah, there's only...
A C5 is C5. So, whatever the...
The C5 is the key.
Right. What it says in the current code is C5.
Correct.
C5 is the key, yeah.
Yes. Thank you, I yield.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Crosson.
There are no further questions. I move approval of Special Ordinance 9, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Crosson, seconded by Councilman Morris, that we approve Special Ordinance 9, 2018. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Special Ordinance 13, 2018, rezoning a property located at 2631 South 7th Street and 2649 South 7th Street. Area Planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation, which you have a copy of before you.
Mr. President.
Yes, thank you. Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Dave Frederick, representing Saras Bank. This involves a rezoning of property at 2649 South 7th Street, which currently houses a single-family residence, which has been used as a rental property for quite some time. The rezoning from R1 to R1 Plan Development is being solved since this home can be tore down and used as a parking lot so that it can serve as overflow parking for another property in this gang, going to 2701 South 7th Street, which is Pet Care Animal Hospital, as well as a property next door to that, which is 2631, which houses a beauty salon. The beauty salon has some parking, but not enough. The pet care hospital also has parking, but it's not sufficient. So, by tearing this home down and using parking will help alleviate both on-street and off-street parking for both the animal hospital and for the beauty salon. The variance along with this was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals yesterday and Area Planning gave us a favorable recommendation last night. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak on Special Ordinance 13, 2018? Please give us your name and address for the record.
Donald Hyde, I am neither for nor against this, but I do want you to consider or at least ask some questions about we are paving more and more of this town for parking lots. One of the problems we have ran into, and you have ran into as a board, we as taxpayers ran into, is storm water cost. It keeps going up because we keep paving over more and more of the land so that the water can't go down in the ground. Now, if this is a small piece of property, it's not going to be a big deal. I can live with that. But if we continue to keep paving and paving and paving over our city to where we've got half the city paved and half the county paved, we're going to start increasing the problem of storm water when it rains real hard. It runs into our drain, overflows our drains, and we're going to have floods. I know we're nowhere near a time it's going to be like Houston, where they have that big storm we saw two of in the spring, where two of their highways became rivers because of the water. And then, of course, a day or two later, it's all gone. But nevertheless, that is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience who would like to speak on Special Ordinance 13, 2018? Council. Councilwoman Lowry.
Part of the recommendation that I see in the Area Planning has listed as number five recommendation, storm water drainage plan submitted and approved if required by city engineering.
That's correct.
So, there's already been taken in for the storm water on the paving as a recommendation.
No, that's going to do with both storm water and landscaping so that obviously...
Yeah.
You just don't want to take up home and then just put blacktop over it. So, that's... In working with the city engineer's office, both of those will be accomplished.
I just wanted to point that out, that that's already in the works, the storm water.
Mr. President. Councilman Nation.
Also reading the Area Planning stuff, Dave, I see that they're asking that you, as they do for everyone, that you demonstrate hardship. Can you tell us what hardship has been demonstrated in this property?
The hardship basically is that the biggest problem that Area Planning saw was that basically, as these two businesses have grown, it's created problems with parking on 7th Street and parking on the adjacent streets. So, that it's creating some issues both going north and south on 7th Street. So, the hardship is by creating this parking lot at 2649, you're going to alleviate a lot of the off-street parking problems that are occurring right now.
There are five different hardships that a petitioner can choose from, and that's not one of them. Hardship due to physical characteristics of the land, hardship due to improvements on the land, hardship due to adjacent scattered incompatible uses, hardship due to general deterioration of the neighborhood, or the parcel located near district boundary lines. Which of those five hardships did you demonstrate?
And I think the one that... And I'm sorry, Mr. Nation. I think what... Basically, in dealing with Area Planning, we found is basically the hardship that's meant is the scattered incompatible sites.
Scattered incompatible uses? Okay. Thank you. Looking at the site plan, which I know is not in this packet, but it was in the stuff that I reviewed online, I see that this house is separated from Dr. Skank's office by another house. And I couldn't tell how many houses it's separated from the beauty salon by to the north. Can you tell us that? Can you tell us that?
The further south, 2701, is the pet care hospital. 2731 is the beauty salon. 2649 is the vacant lot.
2649.
Well, not the vacant lot, it's the, it's a single-family residence with the use of the parking lot.
And then between 2649 and 2701, there is a house.
Which is the beauty salon.
Which is the beauty salon.
Yes.
Okay, I got it. So, the pet care people will walk past the beauty salon to go to pet care, or they'll walk to the, or they'll walk to the beauty salon from the adjacent parking lot.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And the current beauty salon does have some parking at the rear of the structure as well.
Yeah, and pet care has some parking too. I use it when I take my animals there. Okay, thank you, I yield.
Councilwoman Oller.
Mr. President, if there's no further questions, I move that we approve Special Ordinance 13, 2018, as presented.
Second. It has been moved by Councilwoman Oller, seconded by Councilman Garrison, that we approve Special Ordinance 13, 2018. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items on first reading.
General Ordinance 5, 2018, amending city code TACR9 utilities.
Counsel, Eddie Felling, City Attorney. You'll notice this is quite a large ordinance that's in front of you this evening, and probably one of the biggest things that'll jump out, as you read through this, it doesn't read very smoothly. There's a lot of ellipses. And just as a reminder, everybody, that's a representation that a portion has been taken out of the code that would fit in between two different sections. Because this is the entire chapter, and enough to keep this down from 150 pages, any portions that did not have any changes, or deletions, or additions, have been taken out. So that's what that representation is. As far as the changes you will see, almost all of those are with regard to either numbering changes, or misspellings, or capitalizations, so it's just really housekeeping. The two major changes that you'll see are references to the Board of Public Works and Safety have been changed to the Sanitary Commission. That was a mistake that was made quite a while ago, but it has been caught within the past three years, and those issues have been addressed administratively. The only other real change you'll see is an addition, I think it's on page seven, I had it pulled. And Debbie can help us with that as well, but it's really just some added language. This ordinance will be sent upon passage to IDEM. They have to review this anytime that we make any changes to this chapter in our local city code. And really what prompts us making these changes is about every five years, I think it is, we have to look at these standards. And in the process of doing so, that's when we catch some of these minor changes and misspelling. So, again, mostly just an update, housekeeping, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on General Ordinance 5, 2018? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nasser.
Eddie, you had said that we do this every five years, so the last time we made changes was five years ago?
That would be before my time. We do have to do, and Debbie, what's the actual name of the local limits study that IDEM and EPA require, that is done every five years? And that's directly linked to this chapter of our city code. So presumably there would have been some changes, I don't know, five years ago.
Does it involve anything with the Indiana Finance Authority?
I cannot answer that question.
Well, I know, I am sending emails, I'm sure all the other council people receive it, but they, the Senate passed Senate Enrode Act 362, that says for the state's wastewater revolving loan program that are governed by the Indiana Finance Authority, there will be new requirements implying for a loan. See Indiana Code 13-18-13-11 and Indiana Code 13-18-21-11, so that documentation must be shown that the participant in a loan program has the financial, managerial, technical, and legal capability of operating and maintaining its wastewater system.
I don't know that it'd be, was that bill passed this year?
It took effect July 1st.
Right, so that would have just gone into effect. This is a project we've been working on for, before that bill had even been passed.
So, well, now that we're, as I've mentioned this, have we, or is there something for Dennis Otten to tell that we've met these requirements?
I'll most certainly address that with him, and I'm sure he's aware of it.
I yield.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Nation.
Eddie, as the sanitary board continues to grow into their role of overseeing everything of wastewater treatment, that and all the finances, I look at this code and I wonder, does this even need to be in our city code anymore? Do they, does the sanitary board have their own code or their own standalone set of rules?
They'll have, they have their own procedural rules and regulations, and they're able to effectuate certain things with regard to those issues that they have control over. So a good example, you have the Parks Board, that make, are able to make the rules and regulations of the park, but the council also has a role to play in that. And the council is also the reason why the Park Board even exists, as establishing it back whenever, what year, whatever year it was to begin with. So the short answer is yes, I think it does belong here. And if nothing else, it's a good guidance to show who has the power to effectuate these, where, throughout the chapter where they are referenced, who holds that power to make those decisions. And number two, yes, the city council still has the ability to pass certain rules and regulations as it affects anybody within the city of Terre Haute. So there are some areas where we can have some paths crossed, for example, the parks. We can have city ordinances that may have an effect on the parks, whereas the Parks Board can make even a more specific rule that's effective there as well. So there's some overlap, and I do think it is appropriate to have it in the city code.
Thank you, I yield.
Any further comment from counsel? All right, if there is no motion to act on this tonight.
Mr. President.
Oh, I apologize, Councilwoman Oller.
I have a question. Can we vote on this tonight? I'm sorry, I'm still.
This is a first reading on an ordinance.
I'm still getting used to all these new rules, so.
So you'll need to vote to vote.
To vote to vote.
If you would like to act on it this evening.
If there's no further questions or anything, I'll make a motion to vote to vote.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Oller, seconded by Councilman Morris, that we take action on General Ordinance 5, 2018 this evening. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we can take action tonight.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Oller.
If there's no further questions, I move that we approve General Ordinance 5, 2018, as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Oller, seconded by Councilman Nasser, that we approve General Ordinance 5, 2018. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Debbie, for putting this together.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved to adjourn by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Oller. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.